All right. Good morning, everyone. We'll go ahead and get started with our human resources meeting. It's August 7, 2025. The time is 10:00 a.m. I'm calling this meeting to order. In attendance are Commissioners Everline and Duncan, and Commissioner Matarri is on the telephone. I have one change to the agenda, and that's to pull item one. That was already handled, and are there any other changes to the agenda? All right. Hearing none. Public comments. Okay, hearing none. Our first item, which is item number two, is the restructure of Reprographics and Building and Grounds. And Director Voler, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jeff Voler for the record. We've talked about this a number of times in a couple of different settings, but I think this is our formal request to bring before you an official restructure of the Retrographics program. As you know, the current manager is retiring at the end of the fiscal year, and originally, I think R.J. Keener was slated potentially to take that role, and with his unfortunate passing, David Reed has brought up a couple ideas that we've been kicking around that could save the county some money, and we want to formally bring that to you. So just to review, the current structure of Retrographics has a manager and then two graphic production specialists. They're responsible for doing all the Retrographics, but also the mail runs and things throughout the county. What we would propose with this is to move Retrographics under the Building and Grounds Department, one that will allow us to provide them some additional support if somebody is absent and we're all in the same building. And so that would allow some kind of some cross-training and some additional support for Retrographics. But basically, what we would do is we would freeze the manager position, and we would freeze one of the graphic production specialists. Instead of having a manager, we would have an assistant manager. That job description was written by David and graded, I believe, two years ago, but it was never implemented, but it's kind of been sitting there as an option that we could do. So we would implement an assistant manager, and then we would, in freezing the second graphic production specialist, we would in turn then create a new position that is a mail handler, so that's somebody that would do the mail runs part-time, and then somebody that would be a part-time custodial support. And the way I would see that custodial support happening is, you know, we get a lot of calls of, you know, my trash wasn't emptied. We had somebody sick on the night crew. That person would be a daytime custodian that can help fill in and do a lot of the daytime cleaning and pick up support throughout the administrative campus. So that's our proposal. I think you have the information in your packet. Overall, this would be a cost savings of $52,000 to the county.
How much?
$52,000 annually. And I've talked with, you know, my buildings and ground team, we feel like we can provide support for that. We feel like we can provide some administrative support for the billings, and I think this would be a reasonable solution. You know, David has suggested this because Retrographics is not quite as busy as it used to be. Some of the larger print jobs that they used to do are no longer necessary in the county, and so I think we can, we can make this work as a cost-saving opportunity to the county. I believe next steps in HR can confirm this, is I think we need the written approval of the job description, or your approval for the job description of the mail handler specialist slash custodial support, and then your approval to make this change.
Okay. Questions, Bruce?
No questions.
Questions, Mark?
No, Mark.
Okay.
Can I make one more clarification?
Yes.
This was started at the beginning of the fiscal year.
Yes, October 1. So my question would be, there's three right now, manager and two specialists, and there's still going to be three. There's going to be assistant manager, a specialist, and a half and half.
Correct.
Okay, so I just wanted to make that clear. Yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of the restructure, and I think that would be fine to move it down the process. So with that, I would take a motion.
So be it.
All right. I'll second that. I mean, the, the motion really needs to be more than that. It's, I'll move that we restructure Reprographics as the new fiscal year, October 1, 2025.
Second.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Chair Protem Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matarri?
Aye.
All right. Item three.
I'm sorry, can I just insert?
Oh, yeah.
Is this also approval then of the new job descriptions? Because I did review them for Jeff, but we did not formally present them.
Yes, yeah. So those can come out at the next HR meeting for adoption of grade and all that, as per the
Thank you.
normal process. Thank you. Did you want to handle three and four together?
Let me grade. I just figured it was two people, so I had to like
Separate. No, that's totally fine. Okay, we'll handle items three and four together. This is higher duty pay request in our District Court Clerk Judicial Divisions with our clerk Jennifer Locke.
Yes, we have an individual out on FMLA until 10-3. They're coming back on 10-6. And so there is a manager position, so we're asking our float supervisor to fill in as higher duty pay in that position and take on some of those duties. And then we're asking that supervisor is going to take over the manager position in the float area for the manager, sorry. And then the lead in the float area is going to then take on the role as a supervisor in the float area. So we're asking for higher duty pay until 10-3 for these two individuals based on policy 120. And I did a projection there for you if you have any questions on there. We're going to keep them in the same grade and just move them up a little bit more than 5% on there.
And then it'll automatically revert when this person comes back, so.
And it'll be retro paid. They have to serve in that, and they have for the last 30 days.
Yep. Okay. Questions?
No.
All right. Questions, Bruce?
No questions.
Okay. Do you want to try this one, Mark, or do you want me to do it?
Go for it.
I move that we approve the higher duty pay request for our District Court Clerk slash judicial branches for the two positions. And did you want the position numbers, Brandy? Okay, so we've got 168-013 and 158-012.
What? Sorry, say it again.
168-013 and 158-012? No, I guess it's 168-012. Sorry about that. My, my black and white copy is very fuzzy, so.
Second.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Chair Protem Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matarri?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Let's see, items five requires an executive session, and potentially six and seven. So if we like
Did we roll out three and four together?
Yes, we did.
Okay.
Yep. So if we wanted to go into executive session for those three items, and then we can come back out, and there'll be more discussion to put on the record after that. Does that sound okay?
Yes.
Okay. So then I would make a motion, and there's no public comment here. So I make a motion that we enter into executive session for items five, six, and seven pursuant to IDO Code 74-2061B.
Second.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Chair Protem Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matarri?
Aye. And Leslie, don't you want a 1A? Because that's what six is classified as.
Yeah, 1A as well. 1B and 1A. Thanks for that catch. It was on my backside.
Yeah, aye.
Okay, and then I will call you back.
Okay.
All right, thanks. Oh.
It's 10:46 and if everyone's all right, I'll make a few motions here. Number one, I move that we exit executive session for item five with staff to proceed as discussed.
Second.
Commissioner Everly.
Aye.
Chair Coe Tim Duncan.
Aye.
Chairman Tari.
Aye. Kate Harris.
Sorry, she'll speak up next time. Okay, so for item six, I would say that the motion to approve the communications technician initial classification would be to include there was a typo and then addition or actually taking out some language about this position includes evening events. So, somebody want to make that motion?
So be it.
So I would just add what the modifications discussed in executive.
Okay. So I will, before we get back to that.
Do you want me to make the motion?
Yeah, and I just want to say that this position as well, we have never done a time study. and historically, we don't have 80 hours worth of work a week for these two positions combined and so therefore I will be, you know, not in favor of this. But yes, please make the motion.
Well, I did respectfully disagree, but I move that we approve the initial classification for item six with the edits that we discussed.
Second.
Commissioner Everline.
Aye.
Chair Pro Tim Duncan.
Nay.
Chairman Tari.
Aye. Again, I can't hear you, team. Sorry.
Sorry.
Oh, her microphone wasn't on.
Well, it wasn't all the way on. Can you hear me now, Bruce?
I can hear you now.
Okay. All right, great. Okay, so for item seven, this is the reclassification of communications coordinator to communications and project manager. Bruce, did you want to, well, I'll, you know, make some statements as well. I'm not in favor of having a vertical org chart in this particular situation as we have turned them down for other departments in the past and to have one person supervising one person, I don't think is best practice. And so, go ahead with your motion, Bruce.
Yeah, and just in response to that, that is addressing the problem that the board experienced within the past couple months with the vacating of knowledge and that this, these changes actually saved the department money. I move that we approve the reclassification in item seven.
Second.
Commissioner Everline.
Aye.
Chair Pro Tim Duncan.
Nay.
Chairman Tari.
Aye.
All right, I'll call for public comment. All right, anybody on the phone? Nope. All right, 10:50, meeting adjourned. And Bruce, are you going to call back in for the helicopter at 11?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.